I'll nominate Fran.
Okay, we have Fran Kenny. Do we have a second for that nomination?
A second.
A second. Are there any other nominations for the chair? Okay, seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's like it's unanimous. I will turn the meeting over to the elected chair, Fran Kenny.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda would be Vice Chair. I hear nominations for Vice Chair. I'll nominate Dave Durfee for Vice Chair.
I'll second it.
Is there any other nominations?
If you want me to fill out that for you.
Seeing none. I'll call. All in favor of Dave Durfee as Vice Chair? Unanimous. Okay. The Clerk. Need a nomination for Clerk?
You want to do it again, Jeff?
I nominate Jeff if he would like to do it again.
Okay.
Do it again.
Is there a second? You seconded it, didn't you, Jeff?
I seconded it.
All in favor of Jeff Leek as the Clerk? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
You need a...
SVSU reps?
Yep.
Okay. SVSU reps, I'll nominate myself and Holly Band. I'll move that, I guess.
Do we need to...
We need an alternate, too. Do you want to be an alternate, Jeff?
I'm an alternate.
Jeff, okay, good. Jeff Leek is an alternate. Unless there's somebody else that wants to be, sit on that board. Hearing none. All in favor of the SVSU reps? Unanimous. Okay.
And then, do you have any standing committees of the Shastberry Board?
Well, I just wanted to bring that forward here after we have you in the presentation and set us the comments, so I can go into that.
Okay.
Because we've made up some...
You don't have to do that tonight, but...
Okay, alright.
Because you appoint those assignments, so you could solicit from members who might want to be, but it's policy, food service, um...
Yeah, we've got curriculum.
ESP negotiations.
Personnel, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Good enough.
Want me to leave this with you?
Yes, I'll bring...
And then you can bring that.
I'll bring it with the warrants. Yep, thank you.
Alright. We had ballots and pencils ready in case it was necessary.
We always do this in the open, anyway. Okay, reorganization is done. You're all set, Jim. You're gonna leave for your meeting, okay? Next up is the President...
Were there any questions for the Superintendent, though, or any member before I head off to the next meeting?
Sorry that it's this quick tonight. The committees, are we not going to do this?
I am, after we get done with the presentation.
After, okay. Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Thanks. Fourth grade Vermont Museum project.
So I'm gonna turn this over to our fourth grade teachers, Collette Klein and Lauren Boyer-Jones. They'll be ripping out a project with kids.
A few minutes, I'm gonna... Yeah, see some of this.
So they can speak to their, because they did through the whole process. So, ladies? And our fourth grade students.
You guys are the show. We're just here to support you.
So, the fourth grade, as you may or may not know, Vermont is a major unit in social studies for the fourth graders. And so, Collette and I worked together to try to come up with ideas of how to incorporate technology, the writing piece, and also how to integrate the special areas. So, I think that some of the fourth graders were prepared to tell you a little bit about what the project looked like. Um, let's see, who's gonna start? Lauren, you were gonna start by telling what the process was for the project that you did?
First, we picked our printers for the project, and we did the top three, top three things that we wanted to do for a project.
Topics related to Vermont, right?
And then in library, we did some research to get the information for our report.
Well, then what happened after that?
Next, in art class, we designed our projects into either a diagram, a diorama, or a painting. And then, we formed a paragraph that we didn't do as a group, but we typed out, like, six paragraphs for Vermont project.
So they worked on an informational writing piece based on their... We developed focus questions with them based on their topic, which they're prepared to share with you in just a minute. And so then they worked on... There are four or five paragraph essay responding to that focus question. And then Eden, were you gonna tell the rest of the project?
And then we wrote a script for the green screening, and we would interview, if we were doing a person, we would interview that person. If we were doing a topic, then we might interview somebody that was involved in the topic.
So the goal of the script was to pull the big ideas from the paper into their presentation. Does anybody have anything to add? Any thoughts about what you thought about the project? Ella, you look like you're thinking about something. Did you want to add something?
Um, yeah, in art class, we did projects that relate to our topic. And we worked hard on them for, I mean, how many weeks? Three weeks? And when they were finished, they came out really, really great, and they were really cool.
Was there a part that anybody found most exciting about working on the projects? What did you enjoy the most?
Liked the painting.
You liked the painting, correct?
Yeah.
There was also a lot of excitement the first day the green screen came out. So...
Ms. Klein, will you explain the green screen to some of the members?
Yes. So, was there... They were also gonna share what each of their topics were? Oh, go ahead, yes. Share your topics, and then I'll tell you the green screen. So Lauren, what was your Vermont topic and your focus question? What did you learn?
My topic was the Morgan Horse and Justin Morgan. And my question that I was focusing on was, why is Justin Morgan and the Morgan Horse important to Vermont? The Morgan Horse is important because Vermont's state horse, and it was in a race, like, every year. And it raced other horses. And Justin Morgan was like a famous horse breeder.
Shay, how about you? What was your topic?
I did Dorothy Canfield Fisher. My focus question was, how did she influence Vermont? And she influenced because she gave people, like, a better life, and she supported women's rights, and she was also involved in education, and started the First Adult Program in the Montessori...
Montessori.
Started the First Montessori Education.
Eden, how about you?
Um, my focus was mostly on how did the Battle of Bennington help the Revolutionary War. They, in the Battle of Bennington, lots of people were captured, or, and lots of the supplies were raided or taken away. And that helped the other two battles, and then the British surrender.
I did apple farming, and my topic question was how did apple farming impact Vermont? And it impacted Vermont and made $10 to $12 million going to the state each year from apple farming.
Um, my Vermont topic was sheep farming, and my focus question was how sheep farming impacted Vermont's landscape. And, um, how it impacted was, they had to destroy the forests because, for more land for farms for the sheep. And today, we've grown back those forests, and you could probably come across stone walls of forest, and that means that land was cleared for a farm.
My focus question was John Deere, um, I don't know.
Your topic was John Deere?
My topic was John Deere. My focus question was, how did John Deere impact Vermont? John Deere impacted Vermont by making the first dope out.
My topic was the Abenaki tribe, and my focus question was how was the Abenaki life back then different from our time period today? And they had different clothing. They made their clothes out of animal skins since they didn't have fabric back then. Their houses were wigwams. And instead of just buying food from a grocery store, which weren't invented back then, they had to harvest food, like, such as corn, apples, and maple syrup. Another thing they harvested was firewood.
And so, after they created their scripts, we used a green screen to create some videos, and we did that using an iPad program called TouchCast. And the students found pictures to be the backdrop of their videos. Except for Shay and her partner, who used a talk show backdrop that already existed. But what happens is, just like the weatherman, there was a green screen behind them. The iPad projected the green screen image, and then the students had a teleprompter where their script was fed in. And they were able to read from the teleprompter in order to do the videos, and it also has some really nifty applications that allowed us to add some pictures in certain places, to put the credits at the end, so that we could give credit to the pictures that we used. Sound effects. Sound effects. In some cases. So, the other piece that we did, there are a couple of the projects right over here. There's the Abenaki Wigwam and the Battle of Bennington. Those were both dioramas. But there are also some poster projects around the hallway, if you're interested in looking at those after. There's also a QR code next to each of those, so when parents came for the parent night, the students presented some poems, and then brought their parents around to all of the exhibits of the museum. And they could click on the QR code with their device, whatever they brought, and then see the videos that were attached to those projects. And the other piece we forgot to mention is we also did a study on Robert Frost as well. And students did poems inspired by the work of Robert Frost, which are all hanging up on the bulletin board at the end of the fourth grade wing. So you could see those. At the presentation last Wednesday, some students read Robert Frost's poems. And then, if they so chose, which many students did, they read their own original work as well. So we're gonna share two videos. One is the Dorothy Canfield Fisher video, and the other is the Abenaki.
Oh, gosh, I have to do a stupid book on Native American videos that would... I don't even know what they are. I can't even pronounce the name. Abenaki would be so much easier. Instead of looking for information in a book or website, to just go and see them and figure out what they did. But I wonder if I could go to a scientist and get time teleported to wherever and whenever they lived. You want to go where? That's the thing. I don't know wherever and whenever the Abenakis lived. The what? You mean Abenakis? Oh, right, those things. I do have a time teleporter. I guess I could use it for you, just to test it out. Okay, let's do it. How long do you want to be there for? About a day would be fine. You got it. Get ready. You're going in three, two, one. See you later. Whoa, where am I? Oh, hello, who are you? I'm Violet, but you might know me as someone from the future. Okay? Whoa, are those animal skin clothes? Yes, rabbit, deer, bear, and fox. Why not just use fabric? What's fabric? Oh, wait, that was not what I did. Okay, well, do you want to go swimming in Mempho Dog? What? Mempho what? Is that a doggy shower or something? What on the face of the earth is a tubular shower? Oh, nothing. So, what does Mempho Dog mean? It means beautiful waters. Come on, I'll show you. Wow. See? I told you. It's quite beautiful, isn't it? It definitely is. Be right back. I have to go harvest some corn. Okay, is it hard? Um, no, it's the easiest job, next to picking apples. The hardest jobs are getting firewood and making maple syrup. Okay, so what do you want me to do? Um, just wait there for me to come back. Okey-dokey. Okay. It's so cool that we get to do everything from nature. Hey, what is that in your hand? Oh, no, I forgot to leave these at the wigwam. What's a wigwam? I don't tell you, you've never heard of a wigwam. No, I haven't. Well, I'll teach you all the parts of a wigwam and what they're used for. Okay, let's go to that wigwam. This part, the bottom, is the grass skirt. It is used to let air in and keep the wigwam cool in the summer. This part, the middle and up, is white birch bark. It is there to keep rain out in the summer and snow in the winter, and winters. That's really neat, but, oh, it's getting late. I should go to sleep. Okay, but I have to stay up and wait for my father and brothers to come back. They're off hunting while us women do all the hard work. Maybe we don't let the bedbugs bite. Okay. Whoa, where am I? Oh, I'm home. What happened? You were only there for three seconds. Did my chairman go wrong? Are you all right? Did everything go okay with the Abenakis? How do you... Everything was fine. Just calm down. I was actually there for a day, but it seems like it was no time at all here. Okay, interesting. Well, I think we should go home now. I believe you have a important deal. Yes, I do, and now I know a lot more about the Abenaki tribe. Oh, look, I said it right. Hi, Sesame, and today on Awesomeness TV, I'll be interviewing Dorothy Canfield Fisher.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Canfield Fisher, a very important person to Vermont.
So Dorothy, why are you important to Vermont?
Well, because I strongly support women's rights. I am very involved in education, and I even have my own book series.
Exactly how many books have you written?
I have written 22 novels and 18 nonfiction books.
Wow, that's a lot of books. I've also heard of the DCF program. Could you tell me about it?
Sure. So kids all around the world vote for some of their favorite books, and then the top 10 voted books get an award, the DCF Award.
That's very interesting. So, can you tell me some facts about you?
Yes. I was born on February 17th, 1879, in Lawrence, Kansas, but I moved to Arlington, Vermont in 1907.
Are you married? Do you have kids?
Yes, I do. I have a husband, and his name is John Redwood Fisher. We got married in 1907, and we have two kids, Jimmy and Sally.
Well, thank you for being on today's Awesomeness TV and telling me more about you.
You're welcome.
Dorothy Canfield Fisher died November 9th, 1958, at the age of 79. This is what Dorothy Canfield Fisher actually looks like.
And that is their presentation, yes? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions for these young people? No, you're up for it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very much, guys.
Good job. We'll begin with citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? Any... Larry?
I just wanted to congratulate Adam on his election, and Jeff on his reelection.
Thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you. And yep, and I'd like to welcome Ed Malloy to the board. And also want to thank Larry for his six years on this board. And I've asked Larry to stay with us, so, because he has a lot of information on District 1 and Act 46, and a lot of things that we'll be tackling in the very near future. So, thanks, Larry. Appreciate it.
Before we move forward, citizens' comments.
Yep.
I had a couple of questions about the sexual harassment policy. And I was hoping to kind of get better understanding from the board as it's been enacted here.
Bullying policy?
The sexual harassment.
Sexual harassment.
Not sexual harassment, it's prevention of harassment of students policy. Not so much of the, how it's handled at the Shastberry level, not the policy itself necessarily.
What the procedure is?
Well, that would be...
Yeah. It starts off by saying each school selects two or more designated employees, and that they're, should publicize their availability, any publication in the district. I was looking on the website, and I didn't see who the two designated employees were on the handbook, and so, didn't know who that is.
It's written in the handbook we sent home, and it's written on the policy we have in the office. It may not be on the website, Chair, but I can change that.
Who were the two?
It's myself and Kathy Zimianik.
Okay. And then, going forward, there's... There's a couple different places, and then I pass this to you, Holly, as the SVSU policy for me to bring up. In Section 4, Procedures Followed Report, specifically notification, it uses a lot of words like promptly, but never really specifies time period. And so, there's no recourse necessarily for a parent or complainant to say this didn't take place in an actual time period. I thought maybe it's hard to say, you know, it may be just nebulous. But then under investigation, it's very clear. It says no later than five school days, within 30 days. So, there is a specificity under the investigation, but not under the notification. And I think it gives the opportunity to... It doesn't give clarity to a parent who might be concerned to say whether a procedure was followed or not when it says, "Probably we found this at the SVSU level under other promptly's or unreasonable." So I'd like to see if that could be regarded, you know, considered. And then, under Section 4, Action on a Substantiated Complaint, what action could be taken if it wasn't a... They mentioned possibilities for action if it's a student or an employee, but we have people in the building that are on the calorie board, parents or volunteers. Is there, what kind of action might be taken in that instance?
Jeff?
That would be under the DCF, if there was sexual harassment in some way, or we determined it may have been. We report to DCF, and then they would take the matter and deem appropriate investigation.
And is DCF chosen because it's a sexual harassment, or because it's not a, if I'm a fellow student or employee? Is DCF only included, is DCF included the moment a sexual harassment complaint is filed and/or substantiated? Or is it because it's not a employee or a student?
No, it's whenever there's a substantiated case that we feel we have to contact DCF for mandated reporters.
As a, okay, if it's been substantiated, not at all time?
Yes, yeah.
And then finally, under independent review, it just says, they may request an independent review if he or she believes that the school did not correctly analyze the complaint and failed to conduct an investigation of the incident because the school believed the alleged conduct did not constitute possible harassment. Is there opportunity for independent review? Can independent review be asked for if they believe the policy or procedure was not followed?
You should, yeah, you can. It can come before the board if need be.
Okay.
If that's, the board's the last thing you go through the protocol. If it's the teacher, the principal, or the superintendent, and then if that, if you're still, somebody's still not satisfied, then accompany it for the board.
Okay, so it's not necessarily just if they failed to conduct an investigation. They may have conducted an investigation, and you just disagree with how the procedure was carried out, or the notification, or the time period, then come before the board.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I want to know. Thank you so much.
Okay, alright.
Your first question to me, it's 24 hours, one day.
Okay. Can the policies enacted by, at the school level, can they be, do they have to mirror that provided by the SVSU? Or can they be stricter than those provided by the SVSU?
I've served on the policy committee for like 20 years, and I know that Larry has, and now Holly. You can refine it to your billing if you so choose. Just has to have certain, you have to follow certain protocol, obviously, but if you want to tighten it up or loosen it up, you can do that.
So something like where Holly mentioned, where it's, you know, 24 hours, where it's not stated in the policy, Shastberry could go through the procedure and say, "We're gonna add that to our version of policy, so that it's clear time periods."
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Holly.
The bullying policy is law. You follow the process and the procedure.
Just to be clear, that bullying policy is a different policy than the prevention of harassment of students. On the website, at least, it's two different, so I don't know if this is the...
Yes, but bullying and harassment call to the attention one day.
Okay.
One day.
Okay.
We have one day to report to DCF.
To DCF.
We have one day to, if we find that there's been, there's been some kind of incident, we have 24 hours to report to DCF as mandated reporters.
Okay.
And the same is true for bullying.
Okay, but then promptly notified to the guardian may not be 20, you may not, if your, a child makes a complaint, the parent may not be notified for six, seven days. One day after it's substantiated, but if a complaint has been brought by a student...
It's not substantiated.
Until it is substantiated, the parent may not know that a complaint has been brought. Okay, I'd just like to register that that's something that I feel like you might need to be discussed further, that if a student brings forward a complaint of harassment by another student or by a teacher, I think that, once the report has been filed, which I think is pretty immediately, there's all the designated employees are writing down, I feel it's appropriate that the parent be brought in and notified, "Any complaints are made by your child."
One day. I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you after.
Me, too, yeah, thank you, because I think we're confusing substantiation with...
In the policies, because I don't have it in front of me, and we have...
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you, what's the number of the policy on that?
It is policy number 5,002.
And it's the bullying...
No, it's the sexual harassment policy.
Two, three, two, three, and four are pretty...
That's it, okay. So three and four would be the bullying after the 5,002. Is that, okay.
402, I'll...
Okay, that's alright, alright.
I'll have it in front of me.
At least we got this one here, so we can look at it.
I don't have it with me. You might have it with me.
Alright. Okay, Superintendent's report's done, okay. We're gonna go to the action items. I don't know if we could actually do the treasure report, because we never approved Januaries, I don't believe.
No, we didn't.
So, I'd like to table that if we could.
I think we have January here, too.
I don't think so. I noticed February, February 29th.
I thought it might come with you.
Yeah, I know we, we didn't do it at the last meeting, I remember that. Anyway, so if that's not a problem, we'll pull that for right now. Okay, consent agenda. We'll take that now, the minutes and the warrants. Anything on the minutes, February 10? Seeing none, how about the warrants? Okay, go ahead.
I just have one, just one clarification. The last one, 2000 and...
2010?
2010, yes. And it's just, we purchased some... Twenty-ten, yes. And it's just, we purchased, um, page number one and then also on two, but they're just saying, we purchased something, K-Nex ATV Pro, sixteen of them and then five more.
Yep.
Can you, what, what are they and what purpose do they serve?
They are adapters for the smart boards and the Chromebooks. So, right now, well, before we got these, our Chromebooks couldn't be projected onto the smart board projector. So, I got one for every classroom and then what I discovered is we needed a few more for some resource rooms and some other library and stuff, so we added some more there. So, that's why there's five more. So, now the kids can project whatever's on their Chromebook to their classmates by simply plugging into this adapter in the classroom. And since we have Chromebooks from grades three through, three through six, and next year will be two through six, it's used, used quite often.
Are they versatile for the Apple too?
Those are not versatile for the Apples, as far as I know. I think they're strictly for the HDMI, which would be for the Chromebooks.
Thanks.
I have one on the, the same thing, two thousand and ten and a page, where about here, eight. It's just the, stick them on landscaping, the thousand dollars.
Yep.
That's for plowing.
Yes.
Do we have any plowing this year?
A little bit.
Okay, so we had a lot last year.
But we had a ton last year.
No, I know, so that's why I wanted to ask, because he gets that anyway.
Yes.
Okay, you just answered the question, that's fine.
He did touch it a few times.
Because I missed something this year.
Last, last year you got a thousand dollars too.
No, I looked at, wait, okay. But yeah, he, we got a deal last year, I can tell you that. Okay, alright, so do that. So, anything else on the, or warrants? So, you need a motion to approve the warrants and a consent agenda, rather. It's Ed and Dave seconded. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous? Nope? One abstention?
And, and the reason is quite simple.
Go ahead.
Are you abstaining?
No.
Against?
It's not that I find anything wrong. It's that every month we, we, I don't feel comfortable voting for things that have already, that we have no clue what they're even about sometimes or what, what direction we're moving. So, I just would like to see it as now.
So, you want an explanation, is that what you're saying, next to the item of what they are?
Well, that would be...
I think we talked about that, I was going to say a month ago anyway, but I, I get what you're saying, okay.
Well, the movement of the money that's being spent, it would kind of be nice to know what
Okay, alright.
what we're shooting towards.
Alright. I will mark that down.
So, are you voting against or...
I voted no.
Okay. Alright, there's no policies, facilities. Jeff?
Did we, was the field trip part of that consent agenda?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I think it was.
Okay, that's approved, okay.
Yep.
No questions on that, okay.
To Woodstock.
Yes, yeah. Actually, I do stat sun for facilities. As you may or may not know, since we put in the new septic, oh, and the field out there, it's been like a wavy. We've also had problems with potholes. We get a hard rain, we get some potholes that Jay fills in from time to time. With the last two big storms we had over this last winter, when we got really a lot of rain in a short period of time, the potholes have gotten significantly bigger and deeper. I had Mike Slaven come in and kind of look at it, because I think he was part of the process, we'll put it in, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
He recommended that if, if we wanted to, that we regrade it, haul in some, some more topsoil and hand rake and do some fertilizerizing and everything, just to kind of redo the whole thing and put in some filler where we need it and stuff. We did save a lot of money on fuel this year, quite a bit of money on fuel this year.
So, how much?
So, it's fifty-one, fifty-one fifty, five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to do that. He obviously can't do it until school's out, can't check the playground, but he could do it with school getting out rather early this year because of those snow days again. He could get it done pretty quickly right after school is out and we could use some of that fuel money that we saved.
Okay, now exactly where is that?
The soccer field out there basically.
The soccer field itself.
And the holes are sporadically throughout. But the hole, as you, as you can see it, whenever the grass starts growing, you can see it, it's like a wave, it's like stripes. Those stripes aren't the grass, it's, there's dips and there's highs and there's dips and there's highs. Yeah, it's just really a safety concern there.
Word's pleasure. Any questions?
You wouldn't do this until June, Jeff, is that your plan?
Probably the, as soon as the last day of school's over, the next day, he could, he could start on it.
So, you'd tear it up, regrade it, reseed it, level it.
For me, it's a safety issue.
I don't know if he, it is a safety issue. I don't know if you have to regrade it. I think he's talking about just bulldozing it and, and just, not tearing it up, sorry, regrading it, not really tearing it up, just kind of flattening it all out, adding some topsoil to it, reseeding it, and...
Then roll it.
Then roll it, yeah.
Holly, you have a question?
I have, just a clarification.
Yeah.
We talked about this with the last project and what was the number, does this have to go out for bids, five thousand dollars?
Fifteen thousand or more.
Fifteen thousand. We were going to, we were going to talk about lowering that, but we have not done that as we...
I mean, I'm, no, there's pothole, you know, I just want to...
Yeah, I'm thinking we talked about, I mean, I'm thinking back to some other projects too.
Since there's, there's not an urgency to it, since we wouldn't be doing it until June,
I wonder if it would be helpful to, first of all, have the board take a look at it, maybe before the next meeting, at the start of the next meeting, just so we can see what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And then to have something just documented as well, saying here's, here's what the scope of the project is as we imagine it at this point, anyway.
I, I, that sounds good.
Unless you feel that there's something, you know, that...
It's a pretty straightforward project. I mean, he just smoothed it out so there's not all those ripples. Reseed, pat it all down, and then have the summer to grow.
I, I don't see a problem, but I think that's a good idea for the board to look at it.
Okay.
And, and then we'll, we'll get back to him or you can get back to him and just make sure, so we all know what we're doing and we're all on the same page.
Should we try to meet a little early then?
Yep.
Just so we can meet outside, then come in.
Yeah. Yep.
And along those same lines, how does the board feel about, we, we plan on doing the DI out back this year before we do the paving?
The drainage?
Yeah, because that DI is caving in, it's, it's on its way out, I mean, it really needs to be replaced. That's another thing that we could possibly do over April break and let it settle before we pave in July.
Okay, because we're, now we're going to blacktop right around the building and over, okay.
Yeah, so that, that will be blacktop.
Well, yeah, that's something and...
That was, that was seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred, okay, yeah, we need to look at these sites.
And again, we have, we have plenty in the fuel fund, plenty. That could get that started at least, and then it could settle before we do blacktop it, so it doesn't settle when the blacktop is on there. And we can get that done over April break when there's nobody here. That would be something I would probably need tonight, I think, depending on what our next meeting is, I'm just going to be April four.
Well, we could, we may have, depending on what we've got coming up, we can have a, a special meeting. It doesn't have to be all that long and we can have, we can go out and look at, at the sites and just figure out what we're going to do.
I just feel, Jay and I were just talking about, I was just concerned that once we put that blacktop down, if we do the DI right before it, it may settle with the new blacktop.
Well, yeah, I don't, yeah, I wouldn't want to do that. That's why we let this a year out here, because I think that's disastrous.
Can you, Jeff and Fran, can you just remind us of what, what the board has approved up to this point on the paving project and the...
For next year?
The only thing we approved up to this point is all the blacktopping. Now, this is extra, this part out here and this drainage.
No, the DI is, the DI was part of our...
The DI was.
The DI was part of our plan. I'm just, I'm just asking, since we have some money in the fuel fund, if we can head start on it. But that was part of the plan for next summer.
Alright.
Yeah. And the roof is also on the agenda for the summer.
Yeah, next year's budget.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so we'll, I'll get emails out to everybody so we know what's going on so we can, and if everybody, somebody can meet two or three o'clock in the afternoon, I don't care, whatever's best for everybody. I can meet anytime, so it's up to you guys.
Maybe we'll do him, Jay's here too and you can kind of...
Yeah, I, yeah, I was going to say, he should be here so we know what everything is, so...
Maybe some morning?
We could do that, if that's, if, I don't know about Ed and Holly, you've got clients?
I'm pretty flexible.
Oh, okay, good, alright.
Yeah, any day but Tuesday.
Any day but Tuesday?
Yep. It's golf day.
Okay. Okay. Okay, good. Okay, discussion of Act forty-six. Oh, are you all done?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion of the Act forty-six, community meetings, study committee, Jeff, if you have anything different?
We did Woodford last time, since last meeting. Pretty small turnout, you know, I mean, they, you know, but the parents there, it seemed like they're pretty adamant that they like Woodford, they like what Woodford does as a school, you know, and, you know, I think there's this. I mean, it's a good discussion, you know, it's cold up there, but, yeah, I think the only thing that's changed since then, you know, there's really no report, you know, no progress from the Act forty-six committee, we're just getting information. You know, I think the only thing I read in the paper was that the BSD decided that they were looking to form their own study committee. I have not talked to anyone about that yet, but that's about where it stands with them, they're looking at that, whatever's written in the banner of them succeeding and running their own district. So, that's only what I read in the banner. There's been no discussion at the committee meetings. So, that's something that eventually will have to be probably readdressed.
I have, Don Hoyt from the Arlington School that had emailed me, said they would be interested in talking with us again. She said she would get in contact with me, so, and I don't know when that'll be, but I haven't answered her yet because she really hasn't said anything, so...
We talked last month about the possibility of this district hiring its own consultant to, you know, help us in the process.
Yep.
And I wondered if that was something that we, you know, wanted to talk a little bit more about.
I mean, I had talked to Jim about that, there's, Larry, you might know some of, some of this, is there's a bunch of money out there. There's five thousand dollars for a, I don't know what type of a study, but there's twenty thousand out there. That's for to form a formal committee, it's the twenty thousand, so we're already part of that formal committee.
Okay.
And it might be worth talking to the other districts as well, which seem to be left out with BSD moving forward on their own. Because they're going to be in the same lurch as us.
Well, I know North Bennington's has, has said they would like to talk more, so I, Larry, I don't know if you've heard anything from them?
Was that the Mount Anthony meeting, or, excuse me, BSD meeting last night? And it's pretty apparent that they're determined to go their own way.
Yeah.
I think it does open the door up for us to do our own study or perhaps collaborate with the other schools in the district that are outside of BSD.
I mean, because I think the other schools in the district will be, if BSD moves forward and we move forward, they're going to be the ones who knows the district. So, I don't know if it's worth collaborating with them or reaching out to them and have a discussion as a, the other half.
That's why I think maybe having a consultant that we hire just to help us, you know, Bennington's recent pronouncements may or may not actually result in anything, you know, concrete. But we've talked about working with schools within this SU and possibly with schools that are outside of this, or districts that are outside of the SU. And so, just so, if we're going to really explore all the options, I wonder if it should be just, you know, us working with a consultant, I don't know what that would mean cost-wise, whether there are people out there who are available. I know that everyone's trying to, you know, accomplish this thing right now.
Yeah, I mean, the only consultant, the one that's been coming down is working in Arlington and they feel like they can't, according to Jim, on this, that little conflict. So, you're basically on a waiting list, so I mean... Might be worth trying, that's...
I don't know if Jim was still here when we talked about this last time, but maybe if we could ask him again to see whether he can point us in the right direction.
I've got to go over, obviously bring the warrants over and talk to him on a, a few other items so I can ask him about that. What he thinks we should do, what about the consultant, so I think it's a good idea. I mean, so we know, have a better handle on what we're talking about and what our options are, that's what I'm interested in. But, anyway, anybody else?
One more thing.
Sure.
That consultant that's been working with Arlington may be freed up, he may be finishing his work and the conflict may disappear and he may be able to slide right down here and, as Dave suggested, that, that would be a good move. The question I have for Jeff, in going forward to look at possibilities, something I've never heard answered was, could a district form, we could form a RED, Regional Educational District, with potentially four others, three other schools that are in the area. The kicker seems to be North Bennington, who does not operate its own school. They, they're the ones that have thrown us a little bit out of sync in, in some of the things we considered. But what happens if that entire RED has school choice? Does that create an opening for North Bennington to coexist with the other three schools? So, that's just a question that's...
I mean, the other option too is the side-by-side where you have schools operate a K through six with an operational school and the tuition into seven through twelve. So, I mean, there are some potential options, but I'm not an expert on it, so I think the consultant would be a better option.
Well, you will be.
I will be, but he ain't.
I have a question about the...
Sure, sure.
The money, the twenty thousand, is that, that's controlled, that's paying the lawyers, controlled by the SPSU?
That's the SPSU study.
Okay, so they're the ones paying the lawyer, so if...
When we get to that point, yes.
When we get to that point, they'll be paying consultants, so if, now the, the last meeting you had at Woodford, was that subsequent to or pre, prior to BSD's, not the last night study?
BSD was just last week, or the day after the election day. So, one week ago, they made a motion.
And your Woodford meeting was before that?
That is before that, that was the week before the election.
So, we don't know what, okay, thank you.
So, like I said, the committee hasn't met since then, I haven't seen anything, so I'm sure that will come up.
You think it will, Jeff? You think there will, will be another meeting?
Yeah, I think, I mean, because I don't know where Bennington is, I mean, open so? Like otherwise, you know, we have Shasberry, Woodford, North Bennington and Palma who are now left standing alone. And I don't think you can access that money, that twenty thousand dollars, because it's already for that committee.
Now, the five thousand dollars, is that, is that something we would get from this guy that's in Arlington?
That's something we would get.
Alright.
We have to make an application for it, because that's what it's designed to do, is to...
To investigate.
Well, it's a good idea, like, like Dave, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, okay. I'll ask Jim about that too. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval to create a math intervention position, personnel and fiscal year seventeen off-contract raises. I want to table off all of those and the reason being, I want to set up a personnel committee today, tonight. And there's a lot of things, we have some job descriptions being created at central office with the new HR person. I don't think we're ready, I've talked to Lori Linger about the raises. We have to have those done at least by May, so we have some time so we can discuss it as a board. We can have the personnel committee meeting, we can have it at one point next week, I don't know what everybody's schedule is.
What did you say about May for, sorry?
All the raises, the contract raises have to be by May, she wants them, because last time she didn't get them until June and she tore her hair out, I guess, so, so we got to, we can do them before that, we can probably do them in April.
Is there any reason we can't approve that math position so I can at least start the process?
Well...
Because we're going to lose good teachers here soon because the people are starting to...
I, I guess, and this is, this is, I'm, I'm looking at next week on this, so is that going to be a problem?
Well, that means I can't post until next day, until April, is our next meeting.
Well, I think, and I think the board needs to talk about it and I, I don't want you losing teachers and we're going to do something with this, but I want the board to have a conversation about it. It's in, we, it's in the budget, so it's not, you know. But if we do everything with a personnel committee, the same thing, we got to look at the custodial position also. So, if I can get some, what's a day next week that's good for people to meet on a, well, who wants to be on the personnel? I can. Everybody doesn't have to attend, but...
I'd be willing to.
Okay. Of course, Jeff will be there. Ed?
Yep.
Ed, Ed will be there, okay. And like I say, you don't have to come, but if we have, it's Holly, Ed and Jeff, I'll be there. So, if you can make it, it'd be good, so we can get this running, so he can get it posted, we want to make sure. So, if you can make it, it'd be good, uh, so we can get this running, so he can get it posted, we wanna make sure. Um, the other thing I've asked, uh, HR, uh, Jeff, is the job description, what it's gonna be? So, you will probably have a hand in that, obviously, so, but I'll be seeing him tomorrow, so we can get moving on this. I, I get the emergency, I got it, so we'll, we'll do something.
In order to get that.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I, I, I think we oughta go forward with that. Can we, can we sorta make a, uh, motion to if the policy committee, or if the personnel committee authorizes it, we can go from there without bringing it back to the board?
Um, well, I don't, without Ed, well, I'll tell you what. We're gonna create a, a math position, we don't know exactly what it's gonna be. I guess we probably can, but I still want it to go through a personnel committee, so we don't get in trouble like we, while we've had a couple other items that we got in trouble on, that a certain, um, what I wanna call it, uh, job description. Yeah, it's not job description, but anyway, it's certifications and all that stuff, so we don't go back to where we were last month.
This is a pretty straightforward position, though, Fran, I mean, we're just looking for an elementary certified teacher. We're not looking for anything more than that, and anything less.
Cause there's no specialty for.
There's no specialty, there's no, we're just looking for an elementary certified teacher.
Well, I think that's what, I think that's what people, cause I was talking with Jim on this, too. Um, if we're gonna do this, we wanna make sure that this is a, uh, who, they had a masters or something? I mean, I don't know, you're telling me we don't need a masters?
No, well, that, you're talking about degree, you're not talking about certification.
Right, right, well.
We can, we can put, we can, what the, what the job recruiter says is at least a bachelor's, cause you have to have a bachelor's to have the certification in the first place.
Okay.
So, it's just like, again, it's like if I hired a sixth grade teacher, it's the same thing. You, you, you ask for at least a bachelor's and certification in elementary education, this would be the same qualifications.
Well, I, I don't see a problem then, if you, we, we can do an approval to create.
Fran?
The, yes, Holly.
I would feel more comfortable having a committee. I know myself, not other people, I have unanswered questions from the last time. I, I know we have a need, I know we need a math person, but we need to have a plan, have the proper what, what we're looking for, we need to, we need to take some time and, and look into getting just what the students, the faculty, the school needs.
But if teachers are gonna be hiring, they're moving districts, they're doing it now. I mean, they're interviewing other districts, I mean, they're posting.
Well, we're talking next week, he said, we'd have a meeting.
You can't approve this till next meeting.
Yeah.
You can have an emergency meet, you can have.
We can have a special meeting, I'm, I'm not worried about that, we can do that.
The, um, yeah, you could have a board meeting following the committee meeting, and.
Yeah.
And do it then, I suppose.
But I'm, I'm talking about having a meeting next week, so we know what we're doing, that's all I'm saying.
Let me just ask, though, do we have a job description?
If we do.
And do we need to approve that before, if you can?
I think so, it's been a job description in the districts over the last couple of years.
Okay, so the board, I mean, will, will, you can post this without having the board approve the?
No, I need you to approve the position that I, I need to know I'm gonna have the position before I can post it.
We need to approve the position.
Just to create it.
All right.
And then, and then I can post it, I can go through the interview process.
Okay.
And then bring a recommendation from that point on.
Right. Um, there's, so Holly is expressing some concern about what the position's gonna look like? Um, I mean, if, are you saying you wanna look at the job description and?
I, I would feel more comfortable looking at, you said it's an HR?
Well, HR's supposed to be looking at that along with.
I can give you a copy of it. I have a copy of it.
Are we, do we know what we're?
Uh, here's, here's what I'm gonna suggest, and you guys can, um, I'm gonna say, uh, if we can, can we have a meet, meet on Monday? And we can approve this on Monday if that the case, but I'd really like to talk to HR. I, I don't know, I don't think that's gonna screw you up too much, Jeff, if we wait till Monday?
Yeah, I just don't know where we're gonna find out between now and Monday, but, okay.
Well, this way.
We've talked about this position for over two years now, I thought it was pretty clear what I was asking for, and what I was looking at, and what, what's it gonna look like.
The job description now.
Did I have a job description copy, I mean, just. But we can wait till Monday if you really need to.
Well, I, I, well, I wanna take them all at once, cause we have the guidance position, uh, we need to talk about the custodial position.
Which I, which I agree with, I think those are, do need to look at closely, but this one is.
And then we'll do the raises. Um, I, 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 I know the urgency on this, I, I do get it. Uh, but instead of getting put back in a corner again like we did here just shortly, and finding out certain things on certain job descriptions that weren't there, and now we've got a, it's in the HR's hands now, and I, I did talk to Jim Culkeen, and he said, well, do that, set up your, I asked him about a personnel committee, I said, yeah, we can do that, and we can prove that at the personnel committee meeting, if that matter, for that matter. So, we can do this, I just wanna make sure we do it and do it right. And so, we don't, uh, and I'm not saying anything that's here isn't right, I wanna double check. And I, if that makes everybody feel better, but we would meet on Monday if you'd like, and we can meet during the day. And Ed can't meet on a Tuesday, so.
Well, I can until golf season starts.
Okay, so, all right, so Monday you can meet anyway, okay, let me pass these out.
This gives us something to speak about at the commu, the committee.
Yeah, if, I, I, I feel more comfortable myself, I don't know about Dave or Jeff, uh, so we cover all bases, and if, if Monday, I don't see a problem if we do it on Monday and approve it. You should be okay, and you can tell a teacher, we're, we understand, but it's, it's, for me, it's the, this job description.
Teacher, yeah, just.
Well, no, I understand that, I under, I, I get that, but I, I, I'm sure we're, we're gonna find one, because it's, uh, and the other thing, too, I wanted to ask is, is the, uh, since we're on the math interventionist, this digital math, what is that? I've got, I'm, I'll try to get it off the computer, and this is something that.
Digital math?
Digital math. I've seen it twice now, so I, I wasn't able to print it off, do you know anything about it, Sarah?
Where have you seen it?
It's on a, from VSBA, or not VSBA, um, I think so, the School Board Association.
I don't know what digital math is.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll bring it in and.
Give it to us.
Yeah.
Fran?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have just two questions, one, this personnel committee, is it a Shastberry Personnel Committee, so?
Yes.
Essentially a committee of the board members.
For the schools, no, you can have parents in there, too.
Okay, that's, okay, and second, when, uh, just procedurally, if.
This'll be a public meeting.
Okay, if something is requested to be, uh, you say, you know, I wanna table this.
Yes.
May board members still bring up a motion to consider the item? Is it just by courtesy, it's tabled, or is that by dint of the, by duty of the chair?
It's, it's my understanding, we can, whatever we get at that meeting, we can vote on that, in that meeting.
If, if you wanna table a matter, and a, and another board member decides they wanna bring it up for a vote,
Mm-hmm.
it can still be brought up for.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Courtesy they table.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, that's a great question, um, and I think it goes to the heart of what we're.
Board's pleasure.
Where we are here right now, I mean, I, there's three votes in favor of approving this right now, uh.
How do you know that?
Uh, intuition.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, out of courtesy, um, to the rest of the board, I think that, uh, you know, we'd be prepared to, to do what you're asking, but I don't wanna do it at the expense of losing a qualified teacher, because I, I, I guess I'm not clear on what it is, yeah, you know, Holly and Fran, that you think we'll accomplish by looking at this over the next four or five days, and what changes might be made.
Because, I mean, it's my understanding that it's still under the elementary teacher contract. And so, they would be no different if you're hiring a kindergarten teacher, it'd be the same job description. So, if we're gonna look at job descriptions for this, then we'd have to look at every job description in this school.
No, just the three.
Well, we would, we would look at.
But it's, it's an elementary position. It's not a math teacher, cause there is no state certification for K through six math teacher. As, as you're looking at an elementary teacher, as, you know, who has, who say specialize in math intervention.
There's, in looking up math intervention lists, math coach.
There is no state.
I, I'm not talking about credentials, I'm not talking about that, Jeff. What I'm talking about is there's many ways to get there. That's, that's my concern. But are you, it's board's pleasure, I'm just, I'm.
So, so Holly, are you saying?
Fran, it's your pleasure.
Well, I just said it's board's pleasure, you tell me what, where we're going here.
Are, are you suggesting that the, that in the committee, you might wanna revise the, um, this?
I think that's what she's saying, yeah.
Duties?
Yeah. I wanna, I, I don't wanna get into the position we were last month, that's, that's my concern.
Which I, which I totally understand, I totally get, but that, this is a completely different situation, a completely different situation. This is a contract person that, it's just like I said, just like if you were to approve any classroom teacher in a building.
Mm-hmm.
It's the same, same credentials, same kind of requirements, there'd be, it's, it's, it's very cut and dry compared to our situation we had to deal with last month.
Okay.
Cause that was much different.
I'll say again, board's pleasure, Larry.
Uh, Jeff, did you say this would be a contracted position?
Mm-hmm.
This would be a teacher?
This would just be, yeah, this, this person would come in as a, as a Shastberry teacher. Her ti, her position would be, or his position would be math interventionist, but it would still be in the contracted position under the teacher's contract. They wouldn't be under ESP, or off-contract, or, uh, title, or anything like that, they'd be under the.
Have you worked with HR on this?
On the job description last year, I did.
No, recently.
No, what do you mean, oh, I don't know what you mean by worked with HR?
Well, HR's working on establishing this position, so we do it correctly, so you do it correctly. Uh, they have some concerns about it, too, so.
Well, I asked for this, I asked for this the other day, and no, from HR, and nobody said a word to me about that, they, they gave me the position, and I posted.
Well, Ed mentioned it last night at the BSD meeting, they were still working on the description, so you might wanna check with HR to see what their input is, I mean, that's what we have them for.
Well, I'm at a loss.
On the job, you're talking about the job description, though, which, this, this is not a job description, right, this is, Jeff, is this the formal job description that you had?
This is a job description we drew up, I drew up last year, and I presented this board, like, the board saw this last year when I presented it.
And you asked, uh, you asked HR to?
I didn't have a copy, so I asked them for, cause knowing that it was coming up today, I asked them to send me the description I wrote up last year, and they sent me this.
Okay. And, uh, I mean, I, I've got a move that we approve it tonight, I, and if we don't have, uh, three people agree, then it can wait until, until next week.
Board, like I said, board's pleasure, so, tell me what you wanna do.
I'm, I'm just very concerned that we have someone looking at this, this was from a year, this, this looks new from, from, to me. Doesn't look like the last one that we had, but I didn't have that with me tonight. Um, but I would like to hear what HR has to say, that myself, that's my own opinion.
Well, I, yeah, well, that's why, that's why I brought it up, about tabling it, but.
And one of the discussions we had over that thing last week, last month, was that we can write our own job descriptions, too, at Shastberry.
Mm-hmm.
Board.
Yeah, I, I think what the, the, uh, when talking with Jim and, um, Ed Kiernan, I think his name is, um.
McTurnan.
What is it?
McTurnan.
McTurnan, okay, I'm thinking of this, this.
We can still approve the position, do the job description before we hire, too. Cause the person that signed the contract, they reach out a job description, and it can change by the time.
Yeah, I, listen, I just, I wanna know which way we're headed here.
I mean, I'd rather get people in the door, so Jeff can start interviewing personally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the job description we can work up, and when the person interviews.
The only thing you wanna be very careful about that, because whoever he, when he posts that position, you wanna make sure you have a job description, and it may not be this one, I don't know, I don't know how that's gonna work, so.
Well, if we can do the job.
Could be a problem.
If we can do the job description one meeting, we could do it next Monday night, do the job description.
Yeah.
We could approve this tonight, Jeff could post this tomorrow, he's not gonna be interviewing Friday. You know, it gives people a chance.
You know, gives people a chance.